So there are two meetings on the agenda tonight. The first meeting we're going to go through is the regular voting meeting. So Mr. McCoslin, will you please take a roll?
Mrs. Feis?
I'm here.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Here.
Mrs. Janasik?
Mrs. Hoppe?
Here.
Mr. McGregor?
Here.
Mr. Modrak?
Here.
Mr. Scalzo?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Christensen?
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, we're going to have a presentation from SiteLogic on the progress of Phase Two at IMS.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay, is that better? All right, well, good evening. I'm here to give an update on Phase Two of the Middle School Project, which I believe a group of you have, was able to tour before the meeting. I'm going home. So, right here is a picture of the phasing plan. So the area that we are working in currently is outlined in red, which is the tan area, both on the first and second floor. First floor is your art rooms, tech ed area. Second floor are your classrooms, along with your new world language rooms that are being done. Next slide. So the work that has been completed to date are the interior demolition work, the exterior CMU staining that I believe you guys picked a color on last time has started, as far as we can go for this summer. The underground plumbing is completed in those areas. We have removed the existing RTU unit because we know the new units will be here on time. The framing of the walls on the second floor have been completed. They are now done on the first floor. The generator pad has been poured outside, and we finished the floor around elevator that will be turned over for the start of school. So that is work that is completed. Ongoing activities, the interior painting has started in miscellaneous areas. Piping to the classroom sinks has started. They're insulating all the pipes, both plumbing and HVAC, that are installed on the first and second floor that have been tested. They're installing the fan coil units that are hanging in each of the classrooms. They have started to do the EFIS on the exterior of the building, on the sixth grade side, and also above the cafeteria. Again, framing on the first floor is continuing. Electrical roughens are continuing throughout, in addition to the fan coil units that are in the ceiling, and some masonry block in the gang bathrooms has started. So these are just some pictures, like I said, for those of you who are able to see. This is the EFIS work that has started on the front of the building. We were hoping to have the metal roofing done this summer, but those panels have been delayed, so those are coming later, and we'll see if we are able to work them in either second shift or on the weekend, see if we can expedite that work. Next slide, please. Or next summer, correct. So these are just, on the right-hand side are pictures of the window openings getting enlarged in the existing rooms. And then on the left-hand side is, again, the generator pad that has been poured to receive the new generator. These are just some pictures of inside the second-floor classrooms and the main hallway. And then the last slide is the first-floor gang bathrooms that is in the process of being roughed in, where the CMU masonry work is starting. So that is just a brief overview of what is going on in Phase Two. School will be starting on time because we're really not in an area that is being turned over for the start of school. This area will be turned over at the end of December and be ready when you guys come back after Christmas. So is there any other questions that you guys have? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the tour today.
Yeah, that was very nice.
It was very, it put a lot of things in perspective of what you guys have been talking about, so thank you.
Right, thank you.
Okay, now relative to another construction project, Draw Collective is going to give us an update on the elementary center.
Hi, everyone. I have passed out a schedule. So at the end of July, we submitted our 85% construction document package to Macero. They are currently in their process of cost estimating for the construction document phase. They said they should be done by the end of the month. At that point, we'll review that and talk about it, see if there's any last-minute modifications that need to be made. They're basically in daily conversations as it goes right now. The goal is to be ready to go out for bid, getting near the end of September, so on the 20th. Right now, that's our target date to hit the streets with the documents for the contractors. It will take somewhere between four to six weeks to bid, depending upon what the climate is. Macero likes to reserve a little bit of extra time, so we start with four weeks, but if we're not getting the right amount of activity, or there are other projects that are bidding at the same time, they kind of reserve the right to shift the date a little bit at the end and respond to what's going on in the market, which is a good idea. Right now, it's hard to find folks to participate in projects. We will, once bids come in, we'll be looking at the prices, of course, talking about selection of alternates and things like that. We still have final discussion on which alternates we're going to include in the bid packages for the contractors to give you some flexibility on bid day when we open, and you hopefully have some ability to control cost, depending upon what happens with the market. And then we'd basically be giving notices to proceed after you award the project in November, and we probably see contractors starting at the beginning of December with their prep work. I don't foresee anyone onsite in December. That will happen probably after the turn of the year, just guessing. Approvals, where we are on approvals, the law consolidation actually was completed. We got the paperwork on Friday. I think there's a couple of signatures, but other than that, good to go. So that worked out, the developers' agreement, as a part of our overall municipal approval. We've forwarded the cost estimates that Gateway, as a part of their responsibility to the municipality, is to review those cost estimates and then come back with a cost for what your bonding would be for the project as a part of the developers' agreement. And so that'll get done here in the next few weeks, as long as it's done before we're going out for bid. But there's a lot of messing around to get bonds and make sure that we've got all the contractual documents accomplished, but there's plenty of time between now and bid day. There is a sign approval. That's one of our last things, that's to hold out on the municipal approvals, which are, you have a ground sign, and then we have traffic directional signs and things like that. That's part of, the municipality's asked us to have a separate approval for that. That'll be submitted here in the next week or so. We did receive MPDS approval, so we did get that, which is really important. We did get both of our stream crossing approvals. The Corps of Engineers, as well as DEP, signed off on the stream crossings, so that was something that was, we've been waiting for, for a while. The sewage module that was submitted on June 28th, we still haven't had the final sign-off on that, but I think we're in the timeline. I think we said that it wouldn't be, based on their information, not until September that we would get that sign-off. So I think everything's going fine. We got the parameters of the design back then, so we knew, we know where we're at, and that was good news.
Everything's still, I think, you know, the last we discussed, you know, no pumping station, anything like that's required?
Everything's grabbing.
Everything just taps right into the municipal lines?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, everything looks good, unless there's some surprise at the last minute here, but we haven't heard anything to that nature.
Okay.
And then we did get our Columbia Gas agreement executed, so that's the list. I don't, we don't, I don't think there are any other ones. There'll be a few signatures and things like that at the end. Once we get a contractor on board, the NPDS permits get signed by a contractor. We don't know who those contractors are yet today, so those will sit and wait. But I think right now, you're in a good position from all the approvals. So that's good. That's about it, from my perspective. Kayla is here, and she's going to have a little bit of fun and walk through the library and do a little 3D fly-through of the library to show you where that is. It's one of our last pieces to show of interior design concepts and everything like that. Obviously, there's been a lot of work with the administration group to make that all happen, and a lot of regeneration of different design solutions to get to an end product, and Dr. Welsh, I thought it'd be fun to show a little bit of that. It's a good thing so. Any questions for me before I sit down?
Any questions?
Thank you.
No? Thanks, Dan.
Appreciate it.
So, like Dan was just mentioning, we wanted to give you a design update on our two library spaces. So the first one that we have here, we're right outside of our primary library, which is on the ground floor. And once you come right in the door, you would be greeted with the librarian desk. It's one of the first spaces in this area. You also have two classroom spaces. One that is a little more stationed with tables, which is behind me, so as we go around the room, you'll see that. And then we have more of a space that is kind of a seating area or a reading nook. So that's the space. You come in here, you have your library, bookshelves around the room. We actually worked directly with the teachers to work on those and get some shelving that has both a front-facing and your typical end-facing, so that it works for not only the library staff, but also the children. The space probably, as you notice, is a little more playful. We're trying to really incorporate some interactive learning elements, and that includes both alphabetical. If you can see my cursor, I was in D for Daisy, B for Borough, which is here. Included in those is also opportunities for children to learn how to write, so they'll have opportunities to learn their alphabet and their writing skills. There's also a Lego wall, which teaches colors. In a library, you're always going to have your typical book storage, so that's something that is important, and you have to incorporate. On our ceiling, we've incorporated some leaf shapes, which are also throughout the building, so this is just something that helps to keep the space cohesive and also very playful. And of course, you're always going to have your teaching walls at the front of the classrooms, so that's what this element is here. The school's deciding exactly on what the interactive display unit is, but always incorporate some marker boards. You might notice that you're seeing outdoors in an area you wouldn't normally. That is just, in order to save office, it makes it easier to run through. So this is just a very playful space, light colors that also happen throughout the entire And also trying to make sure that we're including everyone. So if you have a seating space, you have a seating space for not only someone who is in a wheelchair, but anyone at all. Okay? If it's okay, I'm going to go to the second floor. So our second-floor library is located above administration, so if I was on the floor below us, you'd be at the main administration and the lobby. This space is a little more sophisticated, but is also still playful, just like the space downstairs. You start, and when you enter the space, and you have the library desks, which is the space here, and then you also have what we're calling tech rangers at the moment. So this is your tech staff. They're going to help you if you have computer problems. They're going to help you if you have any technology questions, and the tech ranger name just goes along with the concept. There's wood paneling that's been incorporated. This here, behind this glazing, is one of the classrooms. So that's one of the library classrooms. It's a larger space. You have here in the center a technology area that another class could meet, but there will be plenty of outlets here for people to plug in and charge, or meet about a class that has to do with computers. Back here is another classroom. Pretty typical classroom-type space compared to some of our other spaces, but it should serve its purpose. You have your display on there and your marker board, along with storage that has actually been incorporated into all of the classrooms. So depending on the amount of teachers that are teaching, everyone will be able to have their supplies in the classroom, easily accessible to them. And this here actually looks down onto our lobby. So if we did not have our model cropped in a certain way, you'd be able to look down into that space. So let's say that this person here, who's sitting here, is able to look down and see anyone that's entering the building, but it is still protected from the main secure vestibule. And then there's a bench. We have an outdoor classroom space, which is through this door here. So to access that, you would go up a ramp, and once you're up there, you have a wet area. There's a sink behind this stone ledge here, and it can be incorporated with the outdoor classroom. The stone that is represented here, in the future, when this building is built, will actually be a fireplace, so it's not represented fully to its potential at the moment, but let's imagine.
And I'm going to burn logs.
Let's imagine that these logs are a gas fireplace. There would not actually be logs in the building. That's not safe.
How many classes can be in this space at one time?
There are four classrooms total. This is one of them. It's a stream space, so it will be suited specifically for that type of activity. There will be cord reels hanging from the ceiling, a lot of flexible furniture, access to a sink, and storage that supports that curriculum. So at the moment, it was something along robotics, but that will soon be determined in full.
What about the previous library, that one? I forgot to ask for that space, too.
The library that's on the ground floor will have two classroom spaces.
Two classrooms, okay.
Do any of them, besides the stream space and the outdoor one, have sound insulation for them, or are they all just kind of open to the ambient noise environment?
So this classroom here is shut off by doors.
Right.
You have storefront here, and then an operable-type partition here, so you're able to close this space off and not necessarily hear what's going on around you. The other spaces are technically open.
Okay.
Whether it's just a small opening that's about six foot wide, back in a corner, or fully open where the computer stations are.
Have you all utilized that type of setup in other school districts previously? I'm just curious how it's gone with kind of the sound from the classroom and other students utilizing the library?
Yes, this is something that we have done in a bunch of other library spaces and schools. Haven't heard any issues thus far.
Okay.
Or any complaints. A library, of course, is typically known to be quieter, but it always does depend, too, on when classes are happening, but the way that it's been described to us so far, we don't see there being any issues.
Sounds good, thank you.
So this is one of the fourth classrooms. Whoops, more than a wall. It is connected to the stream room by this operable wall, so you could open it up and put a large class in here, or you could close it off and have two classes. There are just fun elements throughout. We have a nature theme, park path-type concept throughout the building, so we're incorporating those types of things. Getting some warmth and texture with stone and being a little more literal with nature elements, like trees and grass. Would anyone like to see the space again? Or any other questions?
I like the integration that you have with the STEM STEAM, stream rooms with the library. I just think it's going to drive a lot more utilization of those technology spaces. And yeah, I mean, I think it's a really nice, really nice layout.
One thing that's really nice about the library is that it's actually a scheduled space for even non-library activities, so it's a key, important venue. Oftentimes, you know, when we do libraries, it's just the librarian dropping, you know, teacher dropping kids off, and then the librarian takes over, so it becomes a dark space or an unused space oftentimes when there aren't, isn't that happening. But we have this crossover program where we're being able to schedule classes in there, so there's always going to be activity inside the space. It is not going to be a quiet-type space all the time. It's always going to be exciting. I think that's really important. It's going to be a big hub, I think, for the library.
Yeah, that's a good point, Dan. I guess on the curriculum side, are we doing some work on curriculum to encourage that, so that, you know, we're kind of creating some space in the days that we can use these facilities?
We have great conversations with the librarians. We thank the elementary librarians. We spent about three hours together and just a lot of brainstorming. But yeah, there's so much possibility for their curriculum to expand, in addition to things that we're currently not even doing, programs that don't even exist. And that particular steam space in the library, oh, sorry, I forgot to bring it online. Thank you. That particular stream space will not be one that is used in the rotation, so we can, once teachers become fluent with some of the tools that the students are using in the stream spaces that are in the, more of the center of the building, that space is then available that we can stock with those types of instructional materials that the teachers could then bring their class up there and do different things, almost like a field trip, like to leave your classroom, do something else. So that, that particular stream space, I think, has a lot of flexibility beyond just the librarians. I think that space goes well beyond the library.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, cool.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks. Any other questions, comments, draw? I don't believe anyone from Macero is here for an update today, so we can move on to the next.
They didn't tell us they would be coming.
Okay, that's fine. Next, I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items. So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Scalzo, seconded by Mrs. Turner.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to announce an executive session we held earlier today for personnel and other legal matters and to receive information. Are there any public comments on agenda items for tonight? These public comments are limited to agenda items. You have two minutes, if anybody wants to talk. Anybody on the phone?
No callers.
Okay. Let's move into the business items. Mr. Scalzo, can you take the three items under Curriculum Committee?
Okay, we have three items under Curriculum. One, purchase of high school AP pre-calculus resources. Two, purchase of high school science resources. And three, 2023, 2024 student handbooks. I would like to move all three items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Mr. Scalzo, seconded by Mr. Grisbeck. Are there any comments, since we haven't had a committee meeting on this? Any questions, comments on these three items?
Yeah, the first two items were approved during Curriculum Council, and now we're kind of following up on the final purchase of those items that were previously discussed.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. McGregor, I believe you're online. Are you able to take the six items under Personnel Committee?
I am, and I apologize for not being here tonight. I'm home alone with one kid. Didn't want to leave her home, so. Okay, we have six items on Personnel tonight. I'll read those out. Acceptance of resignations. Number two, approval of job description. Number three, change of assignment. Number four, appointment of personnel. Number five, approval of professional tuition reimbursement. And number six, approval of extra-duty responsibility programs for the upcoming year 23, 24. Any discussion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Mr. McGregor, seconded by Mr. Scalzo. Any comments, questions? None? Okay.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Grisbeck, can you take the nine items under Finance Committee?
I can, thank you. Item number one, we have payment for the new K-5 elementary school project to Macero, the amount of $13,228.57. Item number two, the payment for IMS Phase Two renovations to SiteLogic, for a total of $971,687. Item number three, payment for the new K-5 elementary school, in the amount of $16,161.36 and $1,727.94 to HRG Inc. Item number four, payment for IMS Phase One renovations to Hays Design Group for $3,581.41. Item number five, payment for IMS Phase Two renovations for $31,826.24, as well as $39,023.58 to Hays Design Group. Item number six, payment for the new K-5 elementary school project to Draw Collective, for a total of $321,667.74. Item number seven, payment for the new K-5 elementary school project to Macero, the amount of $13,228.57. Item number eight, approval of student services contracts with the New Story School, as well as Southwood Psychiatric Hospital, pardon me. And item number nine, transportation bus runs for the 20- And item number nine, transportation bus runs for the 2023, 2024 school year. I move to approve items number one through nine.
Second.
So motion was made by Mr. Grisbeck, seconded by Mr. Scalzo.
I have a question for Dr. Korzinski because I got some phone calls. Bus runs are not out yet and bus runs are not official yet. Is that my understanding in our conversation when I got some phone calls from parents?
Correct. Bus, bus runs will be finalized to a degree of efficiency on Monday. And even then, we will continue to make adjustments to serve, you know, the students and the transportation as best as possible.
One more question on the, the bus runs. How will that be communicated to parents this year?
It'll be accessed through e-score or the hack. It will not be through a business card or postcard. Or if we need to communicate with you via paper, it'll be in a sealed envelope and sent home.
Okay, we do know who we need to communicate through a sealed paper, right?
Certain individuals, yes.
Okay, I just, thank you.
Just on bussing, how are you on staffing?
We are talking to individuals every day. It's.
So we still need people?
We still need people.
So anybody who's interested?
Anybody that's interested, please come see me. I will personally meet with them.
Thank you.
How many applications did we get over the summer for bus driver positions?
Bus drivers, we had five interested applicants. We had two that completed the application process. But they still have some other items to meet before we can send them to the trainer.
Okay. And then how many bus drivers would we have to lose before you would be concerned with the ability to meet the current, you know, demand?
Probably three.
Okay. Has there been any consideration into? I understand that we've already improved kind of the incentive package that we have, you know, given out in order to recruit more people and retain the current bus drivers that we have. But has there been any additional consideration towards that effort?
There has been, there is other items that we are looking at in the new contract.
Sounds good. Thank you.
One more question. At one point in time, the board about a year ago authorized vans. Are we using those for runs with smaller, I'm going to guess, private and parochial school situations?
That's a negotiable item and it's in our discussions with the union. So once that position has been approved, then we can move forward with that initiative.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. So that brings us to the end of our business meeting. We're going to transition into the committee meeting at this point. First item on the agenda, since we don't need to repeat, pledge, or roll call is public comments on any of the committee agenda items. No call-ins? Okay. Okay, Ms. Scalzo, you want to explain the Curriculum Committee items that we have on here?
All right, we have two items. One is acceptance of the 2023, 2024 Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV grants. Number two, 2023, 2024 Title I, Title II, non-public school services. So I'll ask our curriculum coordinators if they can maybe kind of explain what those grants are about.
Sure, thank you. The Title I program is a federally funded program that gives school districts money based on their free and reduced populations in order to use those funds to help students that are at risk of not reaching proficiency on the academic standards. The Title II funds are used for class size reduction or professional development needs when it pertains to the non-public schools. Those funds are shared, Title I, Title II, and Title IV are shared with our non-public schools where, whether in our boundary or where we have Bethel Park students that attend those schools outside of our boundaries. And Title IV is for the well-rounded education of students. And so those funds also help us support meeting the academic goals of students that are showing a need of not possibly meeting proficiency. And then the B, we hire the AIU to work on offering the services to the non-public schools because they provide the services for those students in the schools throughout the county. And they also provide professional development under the Title II grants for the non-public schools because they participate in a consortium where they pool their money, all the non-public schools, and use those funds to offer some of these services. So the AIU handles that for us. Any other questions?
Sorry, one quick question. So you said Title I is based on the percentage of free and reduced. Is it lunches or meals at schools?
It is the applications that the parents fill out when we send out that free and reduced application. And that is processed, and we use the data from last year. So it is sort of like, we use October 1st, 2022 PIMS, what we report to the state as our free and reduced numbers. And then, of course, there is a behind-the-scenes algorithm that Pennsylvania gets X number of federal dollars and then it divides it based on each individual school district. We did see an increase this year of almost $200,000 in Title I funds as most school districts did see an increase.
Which is good. I'm wondering if you know how that will be affected now with the state passing the budget with free breakfast for all PA students? Does that factor?
My understanding is families apply for free and reduced, not specifically for breakfast or lunch. It's one application that you're applying based on your income. So we do encourage families to fill out that information if they do meet those parameters.
Got it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And the way, just to add a little bit of more insight on that, the way that it works is that for the PA State Program for free breakfast, like Universal, they will apply the federal funding first. So it'll just meet the rest of the students that aren't already able to take access of the federal funding. So there won't be, unfortunately, we won't get any extra on top of what we already get.
Are there any other questions? Then I recommend item one and two be placed on the consent agenda.
Second. Oh, wait, sorry. Wrong meeting.
We'll save that for next week. But, Mr. Grisbeck, you are.
I know, I jumped again a little bit there.
You are in the spotlight now, so can you handle the finance items?
I think so. Seven items under the Finance Committee agenda. Item number one, July 2023 and August 2023 salaries and bills. Number two, June 2023 financial report. Three, July 2023 financial report. Four, budgetary transfers. Five, approval of real estate services to approve Michael Bello of Buy and Sell Real Estate, the amount of $14,000 to provide real estate services. Item number six, the wave of facility rental fees for the Rotary Club of USC/BPS event that is being held at the Bethel Park High School. That event is the 34th Annual Chicken Barbecue. And then number seven, approval of student services contracts. That item does not appear to have any additional content in it at this time, at least undermine. Will there be more?
I think that those were actually listed on the previous agenda. I'm not sure why we repeated it here.
Okay.
So you've already approved those.
Okay, so then we will, Mr. McClosen, we'd be removing that one before next week? Okay. So I, does anyone have any questions about any of this? Okay, then I'd like to move items one through six to the consent agenda.
Perfect. Any objections? Okay, Ms. Turner on the Policy Committee.
Thank you.
I guess all of these are discussion-only or first of three readings, so nothing goes on the consent.
Correct. So the first of three readings is 006 is the meetings. And the red line, I believe, was very simple in that one, Dr. Walsh.
Not much changing at all on some of those.
No, it is just to meet the new standards of the charter school. So there are three additional items for the charter school that will be at one time in Bethel Park. The next one is admission of students. And that one was one that was discussed at the end of June's meeting last time around to change it to the September 1st deadline.
Correct. That would be beginning next.
Beginning next school year. The next one is the discipline records. Again, this one was large, but again, it meets the PSBA standards that were changed.
Yeah, about record protection and so forth, correct.
Right. So the records are protected from everyone. And then the final one is, I believe, the last phases for the student experiencing homelessness, foster care, and other educational instability. Is that one is the last one? We've changed all the rest of them, so this one's the final superseding. Any questions?
I did have one under the changes to meetings. On page four of that policy, it's redlined as, so there's a variety of different votes that require either two-thirds membership of the full board or two-thirds membership, two-thirds vote of a quorum. And there's the addition under two-thirds of the full membership of the board to, for adopting or changing textbooks without the recommendation of the superintendent. However, that's already present under actions requiring two-thirds vote of those in a quorum. So it seems like there's a bit of a contradiction there. Do we need to redline out the one about a quorum? Because I would assume that needing two-thirds vote for a full majority would supersede the quorum? Is that the correct?
We might have missed redlining that.
I think she missed the red line.
Okay, cool, sounds good.
When I had talked, when I had seen the initial draft, it was redlined. I think she just missed it on which she uploaded.
Yeah, that was the only question I had.
Okay, that will be approved in October's meetings. Wow. Discussion-only AR 100, AR, the comprehensive plan, which is a state requirement. Dr. Walsh, do you want to? There were some changes to this, but it is all also to go with the strategic plan that we have already completed.
Right, well, we, we talked about this a few months ago about the, the board had completed their objective of updating all policies. And now we're trying to get all of the relative, related ARs in place. AR stands for Administrative Regulation. Those are how the administrators implement the policy that the board has adopted. So we put them on the agenda for your board's information. So you're aware of how we'll implement them. It's not something you need to necessarily approve, since you've already approved the policy. So these are new ones because we didn't have existing ARs on these. And they'll be, we're going to try to continue to move through them this year, get through as many as we can, preparing them and putting them in front of the board by the end of this year to have all the ARs completed.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, the other one is AR 138, AR-6. It's the state required reclassification, monitoring, and redesignation of English learners. And again, that was a policy that was passed a couple of years ago.
Apologize, I read this so long ago, I don't remember what was unique about this.
This one was required by the Department of Ed. And literally, we have taken the language exactly out of the Department of Education's AR. I did not see any modifications.
Oh, yeah, I see what you mean. Yeah, and it's, it's basically just directing us on how we would assess students or qualify students for ESL.
Right, and the access for ELL, yes.
ELL, thank you, yeah.
Yes. Any questions? That's all I have.
And the revised health and safety plan. Dr. Korzinski, do you, do you want to just update us on anything that's changed on that? This is the one that I think it's every year we have.
Six months. Every six months, there needs to be review and acknowledgement. There's, there's not a requirement to have information as robust as it used to be. There's no changes. There, I've reached out to the Allegheny County Health Department about reporting cases of COVID. There is information out there that we do not have to do that anymore, but I have not confirmed that with a physical person yet. But the, the actual plan is as written and we'll continue to move forward. Any changes that will be made, we would share with the board first if it comes from either the state or federal requirements.
We haven't, we're not recommending any changes to what we approved six months ago, right?
Correct.
Basically just the same plan?
Correct.
As long as we're getting ESRA's money, we have to continue to update these every six months.
Dr., Mr. Christensen, one more thing while Dr. Korzinski is on there. We seem to have an influx of some materials that could be shared with others throughout the community. Do you want to explain that so that the board can give, I guess, the blessing to share?
So through, through the COVID process, school districts, including Bethel Park, were recipients of some PPE, of which is Lysol wipes. We have an abundance of Lysol wipes that, Lysol wipes don't have expiration dates, but they do have effectiveness expirations, and we have an abundance of them. Looking for the board to grant us the permission to donate them or share them. We will, we have used them in our building. Every staff member, including myself, the superintendent, have been delivered two boxes of them. I've given the bus drivers two pallets of them, and we still have over 2 million Lysol wipes. So if anyone, if the board gives us the acknowledgement and permission, we will be able to find homes and donate those.
I, I would love for you to find homes and donate those because I also know that Meals on Wheels could use them. Shim could probably use them. Food Bank could probably use some. So do I need to make a motion or could, please, I'm looking at Megan right now?
Well, should we just put it on the consent agenda for next time?
And what we'll do, and we'll have, we'll have a short and sweet resolution that goes along with that as like the disposition of tangible property.
And then I think there's one more thing that we need to talk about. We have some usable furniture that another school district or two in need could do. Could we also put that on the consent agenda to move that forward? I know your computer has died. We'll tell the whole world, your computer has died. So we have some usable furniture that is not usable to us, that we don't believe we can put in what you want to do as an auction because there are other school districts that could use it. Could there be a motion for a donation made to X, Y school district for that so that other children could use those materials?
We, we do have some items that if the board approves that, that we can share with local districts. There, in addition to, we will be hosting an auction here in the near future of other items that are for sale to the, the public.
Again, put that on the consent agenda, and I'm not hearing anybody have objections right now.
No, I'm in favor of all that.
Okay, if we could add that to the consent agenda too for next week. Thank you.
Any other comments on the health and safety plan?
Or anything else?
Okay, next, public comments on anything related to school business. You have two minutes.
It's been quite a while since I've been at the microphone, so I hope I remember how to do this. John DeLalo, 1565 Lucille Drive. Some of you here in the room know that I have had the pleasure of being a substitute teacher for the last three school years, I believe. I got a call that was a little disturbing. It wasn't from the school. It was from Precision, the subcontractor that handles the subs. And Paul Broman said, are you thinking about substitute teaching again in the 23, 24 school year? And I said, yeah, as a matter of fact, I am. He says, well, you won't be doing it at Bethel. And I said, okay, little detail? He said, they called, whoever they are, and said, you put something out on social media and they're, they don't want you. I'm not sure who they are. I'm not sure what I put out on social media that was so horrid that I can't be around kids. So I'm here with hat in hand to, number one, offer my services as a substitute teacher. in hand to, number one, offer my services as a substitute teacher, once again, for the 23, 24 school year, and to ask whoever they are to please be kind enough to reconsider. And my certs are all up to date. Paul's got, or Precision, I'm sorry, has a copy of everything. Got new fingerprints, state police, child abuse, the, you know, the whole, the whole Schmuggiggy. For those of you who have been monitoring me as a substitute teacher, when I left the school, I talked to Joe Valani, and he said, absolutely, positively, firm handshake, would happy to have you back. And somewhere between.
You need to wrap up, Mr. D.
Somewhere between then and now, or then and, yeah, then and this moment, the, the word came through, you're not going back to Bethel Park. I would respectfully ask that you reconsider that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any board comments?
Yes, I, I just one, just acknowledge to the family, the sympathy and our condolences of the board to one of our retired teachers that passed away here at the end of July, Tom Urbannick. Tom was a 30-plus-year teacher here, a football coach, track coach, and a great influence to many people within the community. Just had a funeral mass yesterday for him and his saint cows, and he'll be dearly, dearly missed by the community and by his family. He was a very good man. I knew him personally and worked with him many times. But our condolences to the Urbannick family for their, for their loss.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed, Darren? Meeting adjourned.